Good evening and welcome to the Buckland Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, October 7th. It's 5:00 PM. We've got a short agenda tonight, so it's gonna be quick. Our first agenda item is we have a declaration of surplus property from the Highway Garage. Looks like they have a 2014 stainless steel Fisher V plow that they're looking to put on as surplus. Does that not?
Doesn't fit any of their trucks. It was for one of the older trucks.
Makes sense then.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to declare the 2014 stainless steel Fisher plow as surplus to be disposed of as appropriate.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have our, do we have our contract?
No, we're still, we're waiting. It's gonna come probably be while I'm on vacation and before your next meeting. So I figured it'd be important to at least authorize you to sign it.
Yep.
Anthony has heard back from three at this point, but...
So our contract is out for the, out for bid for the paving of the salt shed. I'll make a motion to authorize the Chair to sign that contract when it does come in for paving.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have no appointments tonight. No contract or grant documents. We have one parade permit for the Chevron Falls Ladies Auxiliary Eagles Club for their rag shag parade on 10/31. That'll be, what time is that at?
5:30.
Five, 5:30?
Yeah, just 5:30 if you're tougher.
Okay, oh yep, 5:30 PM. And they're going from McCusker's down to the Eagles.
They're starting at the Blue Rock.
Starting at the Blue Rock, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
And going down to, down to the Eagles Club.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, I'll make a motion to accept the parade permit from Chevron Falls Auxiliary.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes. Mary came in at the wire with our minutes.
She did, she sure did.
Now we have our minutes for September 9th and the 23rd. Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have our vendor and payroll warrants for 26-08. Make a motion to accept both vendor and payroll warrants.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item's not reasonably anticipated by Chair, 48 hours in advance.
I do have something for that. So as you may recall, you guys had signed off on a liquor license application for the transfer of a liquor license from the West End, from Paul to Michael for the West End Pub. They, we filed everything with the ABCC. It's been taking them a very long time to get back. They've had a few follow-up questions. Their attorney, Leah Phillips, has, she and I have been chatting. It seems like it's imminent that this is gonna happen. But, you know, we don't wanna hold them up any longer than we have to. So I just wanted you guys to potentially vote to sign off on the paperwork. We'll hold on to it until we actually get the approval. But to at least sign off on their liquor license, it's like a certificate and their common victualer's certificate. So that once we get word from the ABCC that they're good to go, we can deliver that to them and they can reopen as they need to. So get out in front of it a little bit for them.
Normal procedure.
I mean, it's, it, we usually wait for the ABCC to approve, but in this case, yeah. So, that's my, my request.
So we have the contract here.
It's in that yellow. It's on top of the yellow folder there. There's the common victualer's license and the, and I just would hold off on, you know, we'll, we're obviously not gonna hand it over until we get word from the ABCC that it's approved, but...
And who will be holding on to it?
Elizabeth is gonna hold on to it.
Okay.
They're not gonna get away from Elizabeth.
Evidently, so what made me realize this was Facebook. There was a notice that they were closed because they don't have a liquor license yet. So I reached out to say what's going on, because I knew it wasn't on our end.
A while ago, we did that too.
It was. And sometimes it's really quick and sometimes they take a long time. And it was probably two or three weeks ago, I had a request from the ABCC and I sent it right back and we thought it was gonna be approved that afternoon, so I'm not sure what's going on. But in any event, hopefully any day now, it will come.
They're not open right now.
No, there's a sign on it. It's too bad because there's so many people in town with the good weather and...
Yes, for sure.
And we have a three-day holiday coming up.
Right. So if we find out tomorrow or the next day that it's approved, we'll be ready to go for them and they won't have to wait. So I just felt that it was a nice thing for us to do for them, so they don't have to wait. So, but it's up to you guys.
I just wanna understand, so I don't get something stupid.
Never.
If they sign it, that means they can open, or do you still have to wait?
No, we have to wait for the ABCC. They're just going to sign pending, and will hold it pending the word from the ABCC.
That way we don't have to wait until the 28th to vote for it.
Got it, got it.
Yep.
So I will be abstaining from that, so you can...
We have to make a motion on this?
Make the motion.
We will.
Yeah, I think you should.
Okay, I make a motion that we, we'll, we'll see this, sign the...
Sign pending the approval from the ABCC. So you're gonna sign it, but, but hold it.
Thank you, I think that's perfect.
Pending the approval. Mary's like, "That didn't sound perfect, actually." Just somewhere in there that you're voting to sign it conditionally upon the approval from the ABCC.
My wife says it's an alcohol beverage license for our West End Pub.
Yes, good Joan. See, this is where teamwork is really good for you guys.
You threw them off guard because you didn't have time to prepare for it.
So that was, that's the only thing I had for the 48-hour.
So we moved? Any, any further discussion on it?
No, no, we already proved this, so, you know...
Approved again.
I have to second it. I have to second your very, very funny...
Two-second introduction.
Yeah, your motion there. Yeah, I second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
All in favor, yes.
Okay. It's a go.
So I'll just have both of you just sign that and I'll make sure that it's held for, until we have the official word.
Nothing else?
No. Nothing else for that. I mean, I have other things to talk about, but...
Listen, I'm on track there.
You're doing great. You're doing great.
You're gonna be the one, I think, backing down.
I know, I'm just gonna, I am. We're gonna pop the brakes.
Select Board member concerns?
Concern is a funny word, but anyways, I will be attending Furcog Counselors Meeting on the 23rd. They're going to be discussing the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust rates. And so they changed the date. I'll read this to you. The date change gives the Furcog Administrative Team an extra week to hear of the HCGIT claims figures for September and to research other possible insurance options. They want, would like to share what they learned with council members, dedicating half of the council meeting to discuss on this topic. So I will be attending because I'm on the council.
Also, it's getting dark and it's awfully, awfully dark at Elm and...
I have such good news for you, Larry. I really do.
I told her to come down and see you, you could find out.
So I heard from Brad at Paul Mary. We've been waiting on parts. They're in.
Yes.
Their boom truck or whatever they use has, I don't know if he said it was in the shop or whatever, but they will be coming out to fix that. They just received them. I just heard yesterday.
I, I, the same thing I heard, but I was telling...
And there's also one down here on the corner of Conway that's out. That's also gonna be fixed.
I didn't notice she stepped out now at seven o'clock and it's dark, you know? So good. I totally come to see you, wouldn't tell you, so...
Who would you tell? Somebody of like a concern? Oh, I've talked to, I've talked to her. Yep, yes. You should be, should be back in the light.
She's, "I'm just afraid, maybe all the other neighbors don't want it on. It takes as well it's going on."
Yep.
Any other concerns?
No.
Very none. Town Administrators Report.
Okay. I only have a few things. So we received some letters from Mass DOT. They're letters of completion regarding the reconstruction projects on Upper North and also the Conway South, Summer and Conway Road projects. September 15th, Anthony went out with them, did the final walkthrough. There were a few minor punch items that they have now completed on September 23rd. They have turned the responsibility back to us. So, those are done. And Conway and Summer. Yes, yep. We received payoff of two housing rehabilitation loans totaling $29,851.57. Did you get that, Mary? Let me say it again.
Say what?
Twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars, fifty-seven cents from two housing rehabilitation loans. So these were made back in FY91's CDBG funds, FY91 and 98. They were pilot program funds, so as people either sell their house, pay off, you know, it's usually, I think, when they sell it or the funds come back to the town. So we have a revolving loan fund agreement with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority and they collect a 2% servicing fee, but the rest comes back to us. So just to let you know that that came back. We, I think at the last town meeting, used some of those funds to pay for like LED lighting, a few other upgrades. So just letting you know that was not funds that we were anticipating, but they came back.
So where does that go into?
There's a special revenue line item that we put that into.
Does it get to be used by people who have like, say, you know, structural problems or in their housing?
So there's no restrictions on it from, that we're given, there are no restrictions.
Like failed septic systems or whatever?
I mean, they can still apply for that, I think, through the Housing Authority as well. But that's something, I mean, I'm gonna have to learn more about that myself. I'm not sure. We don't have a program within Buckland where people apply to have those funds that I'm aware of. I know there's a program currently with, it's like a small, what's it called? I'd have to look it up. I don't wanna misspeak. But there is something where if people need a loan, a low-interest loan for that, like a septic, a failed septic or something, they can do that. It's not through the town itself.
It's through the Housing Authority.
I think it's...
Yeah, the Housing Authority, which is more than our town.
Right, but that's not something that these funds go towards. These come right to the, back to the town.
Oh, okay, well, we could use it.
Yep. Veterans Day is November 11th, which also happens to be a Select Board meeting date. We also have a meeting that month on the 25th and a special town meeting scheduled for November 18th. So what is your thoughts in terms of November's meeting? Time flies. I don't know if you wanna meet like prior to the special town meeting?
I was gonna wonder if that...
Or...
When's the special time?
The 18th.
The 18th.
Do you meet on the 28th?
Is it November?
Yes. Well, you meet October 28th and then your next, your first meeting of November would have been?
The 11th.
The 11th, and that's a holiday. So if you want to, I mean, the special town meeting isn't until later. If you wanted to do like a meeting prior to that, or if you wanna just not only have one meeting in November, I just don't know what your, what your thoughts are.
Do you have anything rolling in for November yet?
Not yet, but...
The 28th is the day after Thanksgiving, isn't it? Oh, no, I'm thinking that's October 20th.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, it's kind of a long time to go from October 28th to November 25th. So that's why I wasn't sure if you wanted to just plan something. I don't know if it has to be on a Tuesday, if you want to do it on a different night. I'm not sure how that has worked in the past.
Unflexible, you know, whatever, you know?
If you wanna do it on the 12th and instead of the 11th?
If it's not on the 11th, seven days later was the 18th and never even got a meeting on that date. So that's kinda, you know, it's gonna have to be on a different day.
Right.
If we, if we, if we don't want, you know...
Why don't we, let's make that decision at the 28th.
Okay.
See what starts rolling in for November.
Good idea.
And it doesn't look like we're gonna have a whole lot coming through November, then I say we just skip that meeting.
Yeah, because you already got two other meetings for the town then.
Right. And then if there's something that's coming up, but it's towards the end, we could always meet just before our special too.
Yep, yep.
If there was something we needed to go through.
Okey-dokey.
Plan?
Sounds like a plan.
Like it does, it does.
Unfortunately, we heard this yesterday that we did not get the Charlemont Road grant that we had applied for, the one-stop grant to do the next phase of Charlemont Road. I did request a response from them to provide us insight, feedback on why, if they had specific notes as to what about our application was hanging it up. We had also heard not too long ago that we didn't get the MVP grant that was applied for. And I did have a debrief with them this week and it seems like the amount of projects coming forward right now versus what they have to award is very disparate. So, I think that could be part of the problem.
Charlemont Road is already kind of been an ongoing project. You'd think they'd wanna keep funding it to...
That's, I think, was the thought.
Project in problem.
So I'll see what they have to say and we'll be prepared to keep applying until we can get it. But hopefully we'll get some feedback. I did get some good feedback on the MVP grant that we didn't get, so hopefully when we'll be going forward with another expression of interest form for that also, because that was another project that we've been kind of gaining momentum with. And then to not get it for the Klessenbrook Road, for the Klessenbrook Watershed Project.
Oh, okay. Maybe could explain what that MVP was going to be used for.
The Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant, yes. It was gonna be used to do some stream bank stabilization up at Klessen River Farm. And then also the bridge where the rec is, that whole embankment is sliding down. So there was some stream bank stabilization that had to happen there. And this is all dealing with, you know, flooding and the fact that Klessenbrook has, is a vulnerable, I mean, to flooding. And they're trying, you know, working on finding ways to shore that up, so to speak. So we're, we're moving forward in that process again. And there's more to come on MVP that I'll be explaining to everyone in the not-so-distant future, because we have to move forward with a new, a new phase of MVP, which is called MVP 2.0. And that's going to be a very extensive project, it seems like. I'm learning about it now, so...
This is your, you're learning what will make our next application better?
Yes, I, I learned that. And then separate to the next expression of interest and action grant process, we are also moving forward with MVP 2.0, which is a totally different project to move forward with, so...
Enjoy your vacation.
Yes.
Better come back refreshed and ready to roll.
Yeah, no kidding. And the last thing I had on my list, which I didn't put on your agenda, was Bulky Waste Days coming up on October 18th at Mohawk from nine to noon. And I did post details on the town website today with the price list and more, you know, timing and so forth.
October 18th, I think you said.
Yep, nine to noon at Mohawk. And that's what I have.
Right.
Okay.
Any public comment?
Ta-da. I just wanna say, when walking my dog over at the Buckland Rec, which is a lovely place to walk to and from, I've encountered several times owners with two dogs that are not leashed. And when you're walking a leashed dog that is uncomfortable for you, it's uncomfortable for your dog and it violates the signs that are up. And, you know, I mean, I didn't get hurt, the dog didn't get hurt, but it is disconcerting when it happens. And I just think there has to be some protocol that we can come up with to ensure it or not. I mean, it, I don't know what can be done, but it is, it's not, it, it's not a one-time thing, you know? And it's not an oops kind of thing, you know? It's purposeful.
When, when, when do we close the, the gate for?
November 1st.
November 1st. Were these people coming through that way or were they coming through the school?
They drive in and park their car usually upwards towards the pavilion. So if they let the dogs out, it's not as visible. But the dogs come running out of the car and then when they did, I think they saw me and my dog. And, you know, then, and there's two of them. That's the other thing. It's not the, that your leash dog is one-on-one with an unleashed dog. It's two against one.
Right.
Yeah, and then they come up and, you know, they're all kind of agitated or excited or whatever. I mean, they weren't growling or anything like that, but it's still...
Well, it's hard, because my dog probably would growl and be aggressive, because that's why my dog is on a leash, because it doesn't like other dogs.
Well, and see, Sydney's just the opposite. She is so timid because of her, her earlier life. You know, she's very timid of other people and, and dogs, so she kind of cowers. And, and that's not pleasant for me or for her. She should be able to go out and enjoy her walk. And I mean, if she saw another dog on a leash, she kind of just doesn't bother with them. You know, if you just pass somebody on a leash, that doesn't upset her, but to see somebody...
You see when two dogs get together and they can both be nice dogs, there, that little bit of pack mentality comes in. It's, it's natural. I mean, so I, I hear you. It's kind of uncomfortable, you know? Doesn't mean they're gonna attack, but still...
We did have an issue earlier this summer with a person being, you know, two dogs charging her.
I thought so.
And her, and her dog.
Yep.
And we also have had a bite happen up there this, this summer of a dog that was unleashed. So there are some, some issues. And I've done some digging, because I did reach out to Kyle Dragon, who's our Animal Control Officer. And, you know, town property, we are allowed by bylaw to create a leash, you know, that the dogs must be leashed on town property. However, you need to make sure you have, the Select Board has to, has to have a hearing. It looks like it started to go in that direction a couple of years ago. Zach was on the board and then a lot of other stuff sort of happened. I think maybe it was around COVID time and it never seemed to follow through. Mary, I had looked through minutes and I had asked Mary about that. So we may need to readdress that situation, because I do feel Cindy has had concerns up there, because there's a lot of kids playing.
Yep.
And to have unleashed dogs. You know, I know I was very badly bitten as a child and it's scary for some kids to have dogs that just approach.
Does it have to be a, is it just a, an informal call meeting or is it, we gotta advertise it?
Um, I think it has to be done as, as a hearing, so it would have to be advertised. So it's some...
Yeah, just anybody out walking. I mean, a lot of people, I mean, I met somebody the other day that did not have a pet with her. She was just out walking. But if it was, you know, anybody that's older, because certainly I am not, you know, you could, two dogs coming up, you could put somebody off balance too.
Yes, for sure.
Because even as much as I love dogs, I am always, you know, aware that, you know, of, of other dogs and I'm, I'm not real forward with them at all.
Well, I, I'm all in favor of having a hearing and having signs, but how do you enforce it? How do you, how do you go?
That's the question, you know?
You know, unless we have cameras there.
Or a person's...
Which we actually do have cameras there.
Or if a person actually makes, knows the people, knows the names and makes complaints at the town, if we get three or four of them, maybe we need to talk to Dog Officer, have those people...
Well, he has told me it is enforceable as long as it has gone through and has been declared as...
It's not hearsay, because if someone wants to get at something, if you...
But also on the other end too, there is a leash lot in town.
Oh, yes, there is.
Well, or your dogs need to be under control.
Well, that's what, that's what the bylaw is.
Correct. So, but by the sounds of it, these dogs are not under control, so they should be leashed. So there is still some enforcement, I believe, that can, and that Kyle should be looking into.
And I can certainly reach out to Kyle.
You know, so whether, whether it's posted or not, it is a town bylaw. So whether it's town property, private property or whatever, the dog either needs to be under the owner's control or it needs to be leashed. So if these dogs are approaching people and it's making them uncomfortable and they're not coming back to command, those dogs are no longer under that owner's control.
This is true.
So...
And of, and of course, if someone says something to Cindy and Cindy tells us and knows the people who had the dog, I mean, that's, that's not hearsay in that case.
And I, I mean, I applaud anybody getting out with their pets and exercising them and all that, but you have to do it respecting the laws and the rules.
What, what does the signs that are there now say?
The signs say that the dogs have to be leashed on town property and to clean up after your pet, because that's also a big issue.
It just puts them up.
So, but I think, you know...
There were, they've been up for quite some time. That's why I assumed there was a hearing at one point.
Yeah. But I think, you know, what we should be looking at though too is getting that hearing set up.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely.
Probably doing that maybe for December, so that way there, once everything opens back up.
But I did it before.
It'll be...
Probably have a sign on the gate too.
In place at that moment.
Yeah, I think this plan was, you know, Cindy's gonna order more signage to make it that much more... Because remember too, that when you cross, you're not on rec property for very long.
Right.
So really, when you're on pri, the next private landowner's property, they may not have the same rules we have. So we try to have the signs...
Then that's different. That's different.
Right, but we try to have the signs as you're coming off of those trails into the rec's property so that you're...
And those are there, yeah.
Yeah, we have a lot of little kids, even at the, at the pool. They're, they're, the new structure, there's a lot of kids there.
And there's kids playing basketball quite often.
It's exciting, yes. The dog gets excited and...
Yep.
At the end of the day, it comes down to being respectful to your neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully people can do that. But I think we should reach out to Kyle and, yeah, maybe have him, see if we can track these people down and can have a conversation with them.
You know what time of day that these, this has happened?
Yeah, it's usually mid to late morning. If I'm over there between seven and eight in, in the morning, it doesn't happen. But, you know, nine, 10. Of course, now the gates don't open until 10, unless she's there early for something. So you can't drive in with a car, you know?
Right.
Um, and I cut the, one day, "Well, we didn't know anybody was out here. We didn't see your car." And I'm thinking, "Didn't see my car?" Well, there was no other cars on there. I said, "I walk here." You know, I mean, a lot of people access those trails from different points, you know?
Yep, you have it. We just have, we have to protect the town. The powers, the individual landowners, well, they, you know, they can do what they want.
Barbs is posted.
Yeah, always is, yeah.
I mean, it's a nice posting they have and, and certainly they allow it, you know, but it's, they've got their own. And I don't know who owns between the rec and there. I don't know if that's Medi or...
Any other public comment? Announcements and upcoming meetings. Our next Select Board meeting will be on October 28th at 5:00 PM. And at this point right now, we will be making a determination on our first November meeting, which would be normally scheduled for the 11th, which is a holiday. So depending on the workload that Pam brings us, we may or may not be meeting for our first meeting. But it will be a different date, whether we do it that Monday on the 10th or possibly before our special town meeting on the 18th of November, so...
So if people come to Town Hall, who will help them during our vacation?
Nobody, no. So Alicia and Elizabeth are both here. Um, so Alicia and Elizabeth are both here. Quinn is here. Um, so really, the only day that would have been a problem would have been Mondays, but there will be no Monday that I'm not here. Because next Monday's a holiday.
Correct.
So the town hall is staffed the rest of the time, so.
Okay.
And they know that they can reach out to me if there's something they need, so.
Alright, uh, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, oh yeah, it's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and have a good evening.
As long as we go to that, Joan.
Yeah, let me just do it. Oh, boy.
Told you.
Oh, you have a bat going?
She didn't think I could do it.
Take off in the morning? Are you all set to go?
Yeah, I think.